All right, the governing body of the City of Cheyenne is called to order on December 20th. If you have a cellphone, if you would please put it in mute or silent position. If you are addressing council, please come up, state your name, any organization that you represent, and welcome tonight. Clerk, will you please call a roll? Dr. Rennie?
President.
Mr. Royball?
President.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
President.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Laborn?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Mayor Orr?
Here.
One member is absent, mayor, we do have a call. Thank you. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with first and last justice for all.
Election is to be counted president for 2018. Before I call for nominations for council president, I would like to note for those present that pursuant to Title II of Cheyenne City Code, I may not, I conduct the election for the office of city council president, but I do not cast a vote. Nominations are now in order for the office of city council president for 2018. Are there any nominations?
Madam Mayor.
President Shaner.
Nominate Dr. Rennie for president? Second.
Motion has been made by President Shaner to nominate Dr. Rennie as president, seconded by council member Case. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, no, wait, I'm sorry, I need to, Mr., no, actually with this one, what I need to do is find out, Dr. Rennie, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
All right, are there further nominations for the city office of city council president? Are there further nominations for the office of city council president? Further nominations?
Madam Mayor.
President Shaner.
I move that nomination cease.
Motion has been made by President Shaner to cease nominations, seconded by council member Royball. All those in favor of cea- excuse me, councilman Cook, it came from that end, councilman Cook. All those in favor of ceasing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, all those in favor of Dr. Rennie for city council president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I show, may I have a show of hands, please? One, two, four, five, six, seven. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Rennie. Election as city council vice president for 2018. Much as said before, nominations are now in order for the office of city council vice president for 2018. Nominations for the office of city council vice president?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
I move to nominate Councilman Rocky Case.
Motion has been made by Councilman Cook to nominate Councilman Rocky Case, seconded by Dr. Rennie. Councilman Case, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there further nominations for the office of city council vice president? Any further nominations? Further nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move that nomination cease. Second.
Motion has been made by President Shaner, and seconded by Councilman Cook to cease nominations. Those in favor of the motion to cease nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We're back on the main motion, that Councilman Case be elected as vice president. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, I guess we're gonna go back to saying aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes with Councilman Johnson as a no vote. Congratulations, Mr. Case. Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, and support for two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Are there any items in the numbers which have been moved?
Madam Mayor.
President Shaner.
I'm going to abstain due to number seventeen being an item going to the slipboard.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
I'd like to remove items fourteen and fifteen. Concur.
Item fourteen and fif- items fourteen and fifteen have been removed? Any other items? Any other items? Hearing none, all those in favor of consent agenda with the exception of items fourteen and fifteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Next item is number eight, vouchers.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Royball.
I do have a conflict.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the public on this matter? Discussion from the public? All right, hearing none, discussion by council on vouchers. Excuse me, I need a motion first. All those in favor of approving the vouchers, please, or, I need a motion.
I have two proofs.
I'm trying to move this fast, somebody wanted to go someplace tonight.
Two proofs.
Thank you, President Shaner.
Second.
Motion's been made by President Shaner, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council on the vouchers.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
I move that we divide the question on the voucher from Noel Griffith and Associates And remove it from this, tonight's voucher list. Second.
Okay. Madam Mayor, we have a motion by Mr. Laborn, and may I have the second again, please?
Mr. Case.
And Mr. Case. To divide the question. Okay, the motion to divide the question is not debatable. All those in favor of the motion to divide the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. All right, to the public, please. This is a new one, I apologize. All right, so we're calling for discussion from the council on the division.
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification, do we need to have a motion on it before we discuss?
Do you, Madam Mayor, if the city attorney agrees with me, the main motion encompassed
all of the vouchers that were presented for consideration for payment, so by dividing this item out, that is just separating it from the main motion.
Right.
So you will be voting on the, all of the rest after you take action on this one, so it looks.
And there is a motion on the floor right now related to this one to pass?
No, it's falling under the main motion. It's, it's falling under.
It's just considered, debated separately.
Okay, so we do need a motion before?
I think, I think the clerk was saying that the motion to approve the vouchers was, this was included within that, and now we're just discussing and voting on it separately. Is that accurate?
Through you, Madam Mayor, when an item is divided and can stand on its own, the item is considered and voted on separately, the same as if it had been offered alone, but the main motion, which was pending when the question was made to divide, applies to all of the parts for which the question has been divided, and a separate motion to remove is not needed.
And to approve.
So we're taking votes. Taking the vote on, on, they're no, separating the Noel Griffith voucher and, and holding it for the next council meeting, is that your intent, Councilman Laborn?
Yes, it is, and I would like some clarification about that.
Discussion by council.
Because certainly, we need to approve these vouchers, but this particular one deserves some attention and consideration, that hopefully would occur in this two-week period until, well, whatever, I'm not sure if it's exactly two weeks since this is an unusual meeting, but it would be, the motion, my intent is to postpone this to the next meeting and get some clarification on those expenses, so I don't know if that's necessary to make a motion to that effect. Would it be appropriate to make the motion after we approve the rest of vouchers, or now?
Motion to postpone this item now is in order.
Then I move that we postpone this item for two weeks. Second.
Motion to postpone this item until the next meeting has been made by Councilman Laborn, seconded by, is it Mr. Case? All right, all those in favor for the motion to postpone this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to postpone has passed. Dr. Rennie?
Madam Mayor.
All right, we're back on the main motion for the vouchers. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no. Ordinance third reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, proportion of sections eight and nine, all of the west half, section fourteen, proportion of the east half, east half of section seventeen, and all sections fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-one, township thirteen north range sixty-six west of the sixth PM, Laramie County, Wyoming, located to the southeast of the intersection of East College Drive and Avenue C, postponed from December eleventh, 2017. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. Johnson, discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Royball.
I move to postpone to January eighth, 2018, at the request of staff.
Second.
Motion has been made to postpone until, January eighth, until January eighth. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Ordinance third reading, amending various sections of Title X, vehicles and traffic of the code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming. Any discussion from the public on this item? Discussion by the public. Hearing none, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. White, discussion by council.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
I guess through the city, it turns out, because I don't see.
If you could speak closer into the microphone, please.
I don't see Ben here tonight, so I was wondering if Sylvia had a chance to talk with Ben. I addressed the question of the hundred and fifty feet versus the hundred feet with one-third versus one-half. I did talk with the city attorney's office, he thought it was defensible in court, but instead of a conversation between myself and a staff member, I was wondering if the city attorney could elaborate.
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Johnson, I did talk to Mr. Rowland, and he and I are in agreement that the specificity of a number of feet versus a portion of a block is more appropriate, and the reason for the hundred and fifty feet is that the average block in downtown Cheyenne is three hundred feet long, so that is half a block, as it turns out, not in other parts of the town, so, and having been on several slides with many legal issues, I think the hundred and fifty feet simply remains more defensible, so then you don't have an attorney arguing with an officer saying, well, did you, you know, did you just guess it was half a block? As opposed to, no, I measured it, and they do have, they have equipment with which to measure distances, so that was a conversation Mr. Rowland and I had as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none, this being a matter on third and final reading, clerk, please call a roll. Mayor Orr?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royball?
Yes.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laborn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance second reading, pursuant to sections one point one point six and two point four point one of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code, UDC, amending section one point four point four F, industrial use definition of the UDC, to clarify what land uses are subject to the moderate industrial and the industrial use categories. Thank you, is there public comment on this matter? Public comment? Hearing none, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
For any of the staff members that might have been present at public service, I guess my main concern on this was, excuse me, was that we didn't have tunnel vision, that all the members of staff kind of saw where they wanted to go from the lawn, first angle, the planning development angle, but if it came to somebody in the private sector, that, you know, all of a sudden we came back to this ordinance, or, excuse me, with the UDC, and had to revise it again, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was kind of on the same playing field in regards to not only how the city, the City of Cheyenne intends to use the UDC in this fashion, but it's been thought out on how the public might actually interpret this.
Ms. Montana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Susanna Montana, Planning and Development Department, through you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Johnson, we, our staff did consider all the comments that were made by committee members, and we do think that we do need to define or add a definition of impoundment yard, and we think that that definition will include government agencies, bringing vehicles that are in custody of the police, in custody of the government agency law enforcement department to an enclosed or a fenced yard, so we're better defining what the impoundment yard use is. It would remain as a moderate industrial land use, and as was queried at the Public Services Committee meeting, it would, it would be a conditional use in all districts, and it would be a conditional use in the CBD, the Central Business District, so we're trying to refine it, and we'll bring that to committee at our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Montana. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, through you, follow up, Ms. Montana, so that was, so my one question is, well, actually I have three. One, where are we going to define impoundment yard? Two, when I read the staff packet, it only has MUB and CBD as conditional use, and I was more comfortable with at least MUE also being conditional use, but if you're gonna do all of them, I think that that's even better. And so third question is, are you seeking a postponement this evening?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we're not seeking a postponement, we will have a substitute ordinance for Public Services Committee at their next meeting with the amendments. And to answer your question, we believe the impoundment yard will be conditional in all the districts, not the residential districts, all the commercial and industrial districts.
Madam Mayor, through you, and where will the definition reside, somewhere in the UDC, or?
It will, through you, Madam Mayor, it will reside in the definition section of the UDC.
Thank you, nothing for that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions by council? Any other further questions? Thank you, Ms. Montana. All right, all those in favor of the motion on second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Dr. Rennie as a no. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a county final plat for clerk-creek subdivision, first filing, being situated in portions of sections ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, township thirteen north, range sixty-seven west of the sixth principal meridian, Laramie County, Wyoming, located west of I-25 between College Avenue and I-80. Thank you, is there any public comment on this matter? Any public comment? Hearing none, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt with a revised plat map and the following staff, and the following staff condition, number one, including, include the mayor and city clerk's names and titles on the signature block and the dedication statement.
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Councilman Royball, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
I, just because of the way that this was raised, with the mayor and city clerk, was that just misplaced on this specific one, or has this been missed the entire year?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Seth Floyd, I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department, I am the staff planner on this case, and to answer your question, Councilman Johnson, the reason that we need the mayor and the city clerk in the dedication statement on this particular plat is because the city is owner of some of the land within the plat boundary, and so any plat where the city is already an owner needs to have the mayor and the city clerk in the dedication statement.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution on second reading? Was this one of you? Oh, thank you very much. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a final plat for clerk-creek subdivision, second filing, being situated in portions of sections eleven and twelve, township thirteen north, range sixty-seven west of the sixth principal meridian, the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, located southeast of the I-25 and I-80 interchange. Any comment by the public on this? Comments by the public? Hearing none, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt with revised map and the following staff condition, number one, include the mayor and the city clerk's names and titles on the signature block and the dedication statement. Two, provide dimensional data for the forty-foot e- access easement, or provide a reference book and, and page, if this is an access easement, follows a pre-existing easement.
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. Case, discussion by council. Discussion by council. Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution acknowledging receipt of the southeast greenway trail connector plan. Is there public comment on this item? Public comment? Hearing none. Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Just, motion made by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. White, discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
White speaks very strongly in favor of acknowledging receipt of this very important action. I think the design is one that is challenging, to get across the UP tracks and spread the greenway out to the business park, but I have another point to make, and that is, these type of projects are very, very important to our growing city, and what is also very, very important to our growing city is making sure that the Wyoming legislature in the upcoming budget session understands why we have to have the over-the-cap funding in the governor's budget. Our belt is already tightened. We're growing, we have excellent programs that we're working towards, obviously there is some funding for this out of the sixpenny sales tax, but I really suggest to my colleagues that we need to make sure our congressional delegation understands specific reasons why we need to be supported in those, in those upcoming deliberations, particularly in regard to the over-the-cap funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution acknowledging receipt of the Cheyenne Frontier Days Traffic Study and Transportation Plan. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none, Mr. Royball.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Royball, seconded by Mr. White, discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Well, I guess we all know that this is a long overdue and a very important project that is going to affect certainly Ward One, but the whole community with how we access that all-important Frontier Park during Frontier Week and the rest of the year as well, so again, I point out that this is another very important project that we need to be paying attention to. It's easy to acknowledge receipt, it's much more difficult to fund the program, and if we are having to make very serious budget cuts and layoffs, for instance, I don't think this is gonna go very far, and will join the dusty file of programs that never came to fruition, so again, I think that it's really critical that we inform our delegation from Laramie County how important it is that they fund that over-the-cap funding as the governor suggests, and when we get to that last-minute action of the budget session, as so often happens, things can get lost, and that municipal funding is critical to us and critical to these programs and other programs, excellent programs that we have planned for our community, so, thank you.
Thank you, is there other discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
When I went to the workshop at the Kiwanis House for this, I was actually encouraged because the law enforcement team that does basically traffic control at Eighth and Kerry, when they asked me what my opinions were of that, I said, as long as law enforcement's good with it, I'm good with it, and I still stand by that. I really hope that they're able to implement some of the things that they had talked about in this study, just basically because when I drive through that intersection, it may take me four minutes, but I felt bad for the individual that had to stand out there for six hours in direct traffic, so I can only imagine how awful that job is for that entire week, so I'm really hoping that this makes it a lot easier, specifically at least at that, at that point.
Thank you, is there other discussion by council? Other discussion by council? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next item is number twenty B on page four, reappointment of Tucker Fagan and Jim Hearn to the City-City County Joint Powers Board, Frontier Park improvements, William Shawn Casey, Paul Frowling Deets, and Gabriel Herrera to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Russ Pollard to the Police Civil Service Commission, Mark Hardy to the Fire Civil Service Commission, Dr. Brad Kinslow to the Cheyenne-Laramie County Board of Health, Barbara Sandik to the Historic Preservation Board, Stephanie Boster and Kevin Swiger to the Board of Adjustment, Stephen Gannison, Carol Slane, and Craig Kurigan to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Council, Philip Greigs and Gunner Mahm to the Planning Commission, and Noel Ruth Junior, M.J. Gerch, and Mark Archer to the Contractor Licensing Board. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by President Shaner, seconded by Mr. White. As this is a mayoral appointee, I am not allowed to vote on these. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor, just.
Mr. Case.
Briefly, you might double-check with Gunner, I believe, his last name, or his first name is G-U-N-N-A-R, just for the record.
Thank you, we will make that connection. Any other discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none, all those in favor of the reappointments of the individuals noted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Appointment of Anthony Laird to the Board of Adjustment, Jesse Neyman to the Personnel Commission, Brian Carroll and Jeremy Ornison to the Planning Commission, Patrice Green, Jean Vetter, and Susan Tobin to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Council, and Max Carr, Charles Young Junior, the second.
and Max Carr, Charles Young Jr., the second. Remove that junior, Charles Young. David Banner and Jamie McBrue to the Historic Preservation Board. Pardon me here. Madam Mayor, I will check also on Patrice Green's name because it could be different than her last appointment. I think she's been on another board at some point.
Green, Captain.
Green, Captain.
I mean, Captain.
Captain.
It needs to be Captain. Another correction, excuse me, another correction is Patrice Green, Captain. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Rebel, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held January 8, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers 2101 O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute Section 15-1-402 exist for all of Tracks 31 and 32 in that portion of James Drive intervening, and a portion of Track 39 Hill Heights Edition, and adjacent portions of Geisel Place and Van Buren Avenue situated in Section 23, Township 14 North, Range 66 West of the 6PM County of Laramie, State of Wyoming, located east of and adjacent to Van Buren Avenue, north of Delrange Boulevard. Announcement that due to the New Year's Day holiday on Monday, January 1, 2018, regularly scheduled City Council Committee meetings will instead be held in the municipal building, 2101 O'Neal Avenue, Room 104, Cheyenne, Wyoming, as follows. Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, January 2, 2018, at 11:00 AM, and Public Services Committee will meet Wednesday, January 3, 2018, at noon. And I might note, Madam Mayor, that Room 104 is a new meeting room for the City Council Other business? Madam Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Other business by the public? Mr. Nemec.
Speaking, Nemec, Public Works. If I may, you did, the council removed the Noel Griffith and Associates voucher, and I was wondering if I could ask for some clarification on what type of clarification the council would like before the next agenda, since it was postponed.
Certainly. Mr. Leiborn.
Ms. Nemec, I'd like an understanding of the hours that went into that billing, by whom, and I also like an understanding of the methodology by which Noel Griffith received that contract. I'd be glad to visit with you over the next two weeks and review its really how that billing came about and why it is in that amount.
Okay. Speaking, Nemec, Public Works, through you, Mayor. May I answer those questions here, or would you prefer to answer them?
I don't think that's necessary. I think we can do that during the postponement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I might note that there is an additional agenda item due to timeliness involved.
Let's go to, let's, let's, let me finish with the public first, if there's any other further public comment, or I guess other business to come before the council.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor. Ms. Inwood Crawford, Ms. Hackel, council members. My name is Jeff Dirksen, and I live on Pinto Lane. At the second meeting of last month of the council, I talked to you about the most recent petition we have from Pinto Lane. And at the end of that meeting, Mr. Shaner made a couple of comments regarding the Pinto Lane traffic situation, which I would like to address, and hopefully in the process, clear up any misunderstanding that my remarks may have created. In October of 2014, I presented a petition to the governing body from the Pinto Lane neighborhood requesting some traffic mitigation steps be taken to deal with the traffic situation on Pinto Lane that was created by connecting Cribben to Pinto Lane with the completion of South High. Mayor Case, and at the time, sent us through the NTMP process. We went through that, and subsequent to that, the city took a couple of actions. And at the end of, towards the end of 2015 and the beginning of 2016, there was additional work looking at various options on what could be done on Pinto Lane. Ms. Williams was actively engaged through the whole time, and at the end of 2015 and beginning of 2016, several of you were also engaged in looking at Pinto Lane. I did not mean to intend or imply that the council has done nothing on Pinto Lane. Nevertheless, the people on Pinto Lane are not satisfied with what the city has done. In fact, nothing's been done to mitigate the traffic situation on Pinto Lane. And if anything, the actions taken by the city are more likely to exacerbate the situation rather than mitigate it. Consequently, the people of Pinto Lane put together a second petition stating that dissatisfaction, and I presented that petition to the governing body in November of last year. Since November of last year, to my knowledge, there's been no action on that petition. If there was, any of that action was not communicated outside the group. So, if you were like me, on the outside looking in, what does that look like to you, and how would you describe it? Disgruntled constituent, dissatisfied constituent, yes. But there were also more than 50 others just like me that signed this petition a year ago, and that I presented to you a year ago. When you need to make decisions on what direction the city takes, you look for advice from experts. I've asked some experts on the traffic on Pinto Lane and had them look at the traffic situation on Pinto Lane, and they've said that we do have a problem, a traffic problem on Pinto Lane. My experts are experts in quality of life in residential neighborhoods. They don't need numbers and percentages on a spreadsheet from speed studies. They can take a look because they live it every day, and my experts also signed this petition. They can tell you that there's a traffic situation that needs to be mitigated on Pinto Lane. It's damaging the quality of life and is detrimental to the neighborhood. The city needs to take a different approach to how it deals with residential neighborhoods. Doing whatever in the name of growth and progress without regard to residential neighborhoods and the impact it has on residential neighborhoods just isn't right. But to make that change is going to take vision and leadership. And that vision and leadership needs to come from you, the elected members of the governing
Thank you, Mr. Dirksen. Is there any other discussion by the public? Any other discussion by the public? Hearing none. Any other business to come before the council by the council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
Since we're reaching the critical point here in the Civic Center Commons project, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the meeting that we recently had with the Ward One representatives and yourself. And the first question I have is, am I correct that at the beginning of that meeting, you told us that you supported the Civic Center Commons project?
Mr. Leiborn, that is true.
And secondly, at that meeting, I asked you, since the, my fellow council people at, or Ward One council people have appointed me to be the representative to the CPOT, or the advisor, or the management committee of that project. As you might recall, I asked you at that time if I could fully involve myself in all questions surrounding that project, including the ones that you brought up at that meeting with the city staff, so that we could be clear when we have that January 3 meeting as to the exact specifics of the various and complex elements of that project. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Leiborn. It appears that you want to be on the record for our conversation. I'm more than happy to do that. Yes, I did tell you that you could reach out to staff. I also explained that within the last two weeks of the month, staff might be difficult to find and reach out to because we essentially have a policy, use it or lose it with holiday pay, and we have a lot of people that have already left for the holiday vacation. And you did indicate that you would wait until after the new year to reach out to that, and I believe that we found that to be mutually acceptable.
That's not quite the way I recall it, but...
We have two other members that were there at that meeting. Did I misunderstand?
That's fine, Madam Mayor. We can do it that way.
Am I, am I clear, Mr.?
We did have, we did have, through you, Madam Mayor, we did have a discussion about that, about timing, and you did bring up that there were a lot of staff members that were out of office right now.
In addition to the fact that we have a city engineer that will be coming on board after the first of the year, and that also she's well-versed in matters of this, and looks forward to having conversations with you as well, too.
Madam Mayor, I think that speaks to exactly the reason I'm bringing this up tonight. We are under a very tight timeline on that project, and we have had unconscionable delays as a result of the prior city engineer's efforts. So that if we don't get moving on this and get that project going, obviously, we're going to have very serious problems managing that project at all. And I believe that you indicated that the city engineer would not be on staff until the end of January. Is that correct?
That is correct, because she actually wanted to attend a couple of city council meetings. I will further say that I did also indicate that city engineering staff would have complete, and they have had completed, the response to the 95% design. We are on schedule to meet January, is it 3rd? We are scheduled to meet January 3, and really, there's nothing further. We have, we have met our due diligence. We're meeting January 3 with the CPOT Committee, and hopefully, we'll put this before you to go out to bid in subsequent weeks following then. As was indicated in that meeting with you.
Well, I did receive a copy of those comments. I did attend a meeting with the Department of Environmental Quality yesterday. So, there are a number of significant issues that have been raised here at the 11th hour that need to be answered. And I look forward to doing my best to get those answers and bring them to the CPOT and the other members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Leiborn. And as I expressed in our meeting with the Ward One, with the Ward One council members, that is the intention of this administration.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion by the public, or, excuse me, by council? Mr. Johnson.
Just for clarification, since I didn't get to actually say no to the president, I just didn't raise my hand, I just wanted to clarify, I have nothing against the individuals who won. My problem is with procedure. For the last three years, I've watched this take place, and usually about two months prior to the straw poll, you start to see cliques established, favors wished upon other individuals, who gets to sit where, who gets to be the chairman of committees, who gets to be vice president. And just, for the first two months before straw poll, it creates a lot of bad blood. And then, for about the next two months afterward, there tends to be some animosity amongst individuals who feel that they might have been slighted. I'm not, I haven't found a really good way to approach this in a manner that is going to meet Robert's Rule of Order, state statutes, well, the city code, which I know is what we're following. I just want people to know that the reason I voted no is, I just don't really like how we get to the place we're at, and so that's why I was in the vote. The next item I have is, once again, I guess for anybody that was following along tonight with the agenda, and I tried to do my best, tonight looked like we really didn't have any idea of what we were doing. It seemed like we were kind of bumbling around with no cohesion, and so I just kind of looked at myself and wondered what happened to us tonight. It looked like we fell apart up here.
If you could further clarify regarding the...
I just, you know, it started with the, you know, raising of hands instead of ayes and nays, then it went into the vouchers, where we were kind of finding out how we could actually divide a voucher, what the correct procedure was to divide a voucher, where we were at in regards to the main motion. Did we have to have a first and a second, you know, on, on the separation or division of it? I mean, it just looked like anybody that was watching this on live, or anybody that was here in the audience that was trying to follow along, it just looked like we lacked cohesion as we went through.
Mr. Johnson, to clarify, what we lacked was, quite frankly, communication. This was my first take outside of the Civic Center a year ago regarding the, the vote for, for officers. And so, yeah, I, you know, it probably wasn't as smooth as I could have been as far as ayes or nays. I will tell you that I came into this with much different expectations as to how that would go. And so, my notes to myself were anticipating a much more divided situation as what had occurred. So, I was indeed caught off guard. Secondly, regarding a division for vouchers, that is something that we have yet to encounter in the year that I have been chairing this meeting. It, it would be helpful for council members and myself and the city clerk, as much as you chair meetings and you have written scripts as far as what you should say and how you should lead meetings, it does give me a heads up if there is an intent to divide a motion that we can certainly be prepared for, how best to script that out. On the fly, I must thank the city clerk for guiding me on this, because this was certainly new and uncharted territory for dividing a motion regarding a voucher. And I certainly don't challenge that. I just, it's a matter of answering a question that I have not had to answer before and getting through that. So, while we might have looked to the public, we've muddled through, I think that we have basically been representing the public well and asking good questions, and everybody has had their fair share of comment. Other discussions by council?
Madam Mayor.
President Shaner.
I would just note that even the most experienced legislative chairs at the federal and state and local level often have to refer to the parliamentarian for nuanced procedure issues. So, it's not unordinary to have something that doesn't come up all the time and have to turn for a little advice.
Thank you, President Shaner. I do believe if there is no further business by the council...
I'm sorry, but I have one comment.
Dr. Briny.
I just want to make a comment regarding, towards Mr. Dirksen, and, you know, the two times he's been up here and talked about the speed limits on Pinto Road, I pulled up the YDOT's Chapter 30, which talks about procedures for locally-established speed limits. And even though I may agree with him or sympathize with him, nowhere in here does it say that criteria for admitting a speed limit involves vision or petitions, and they're pretty straightforward in how they want the limit set. So, I mean, he can make a passionate argument all he wants, but the hard facts are, YDOT has their rules and regulations, and we're bound to comply with them.
Thank you, Dr. Briny. Any other comments by council? We do have one other businessman that we won't overlook.
Madam Chair.
Anything further, Mr. Leiborn?
Well, in regards to Mr. Dirksen's concerns, which I thoroughly share, and I do suggest that there are other options that could and should be considered, I want to point out a tragedy that happened in our community a few days ago. A five-year-old child was run over in the crosswalk and killed in the, in the crosswalk of a signalized intersection. I haven't seen that there's been any charges yet on that issue, but there is a lot of dangerous driving going on. There's a lot of speeding in residential areas, and there's a lot of people, including myself, who sometimes are distracted behind the wheel. And so, it really is imperative... And so it really is imperative that we take a serious look at these issues and do whatever it takes, and look at the entire gamut of options in signage, in design, in enforcement, because this is a very fundamental function of our responsibility. And as I assume my colleagues are aware, this has been a particular concern of mine for many years, and I certainly appreciate the changes that we've gotten fairly recently. But I don't think it should take years and very expensive studies to determine that we need to have appropriate signage, appropriate crosswalks, and appropriate responses to the people that bring these problems to us. Because a five-year-old child was killed in our city recently. And I'm sure we all take that seriously. But it takes a long time to work through those processes, those codes, those statutes. But fundamentally, my position is we need to slow down and pay attention. And that's a message that we, as a council, should definitely be spreading in our community in some very specific ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborin. Any other discussion by council? Any other business before council? All right, hearing none. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, due to timeliness of this document, this is being introduced under other business. It's being sponsored by Councilman Luna. It is a resolution supporting the city of Cheyenne's continuing participation in the state small business credit initiative, the SSBCI, and the Wyoming Smart Capital Network, WSCN program, approving program changes through amendment to the services agreement, including geographic boundaries, board, and the credit guarantee in seed capital network program, and retaining the majority of the original SSBCI rules as modified by the WSCN.
Thank you. This, this item is referred to finance. All right, there being no further business to come before the council? I move this meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.